Good evening. Welcome to the August 8, 2017 Board of Education meeting. We have five board members present, two absent. The board has been in closed session since six o'clock for two items. First is collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And two, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Could we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have public comments on the agenda. Are there any public comments for tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to reports and presentations. We have first presentation is model schools. Thank you.
So before the presentation gets started, I just wanted to highlight a couple of items. So there'll be three reports on professional development tonight, and I think it highlights the commitment in this district to the professional learning at all levels of the organization. You'll hear from teachers, from building leaders, and district leaders about some of the professional learning that has taken place this summer. In addition, we've had 120 teachers who've enrolled and taken our D-205 university courses over the summer. I think every day I have seen teacher groups working on curriculum work or professional learning in this building. As the person responsible for reviewing and signing off on all time sheets for curriculum work and things, I can tell you that there's not a day that's gone by this summer where we've not had teachers working at refining their craft. For many of us who have come from experiences in other districts, I can say that something that the board should be very proud of is the degree to which we invest in the professional learning of all members of our organization. It's something that's not seen in most other districts, and something that really sets us apart, and that's why we continue to see such great movement on our initiatives. The other piece that I believe sets us apart is that, as you'll see, the professional development that our staff participates in is usually done in teams. We don't send people to, you know, one person off to a conference. Learning in isolation typically doesn't bring about change. So what you see is groups of teachers, or groups of administrators, or teams of teachers and administrators going together to really synthesize the learning and bring it back to the whole organization. So that's just a couple of highlights, and we're going to start with our Model Schools Conference, which took place in June, and was our early childhood and elementary principal group, who's not been before, and some district administrators.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. I had the opportunity to attend last year the Model Schools Conference in the summer of 2016 with Dr. Moyer and all of our 612 principals. And we shared with you when we came back, the energy and the value that we found in that particular conference. And as Mary said, it is highly valued to us as leaders and to our teachers that you as a board support and value not only professional development for our teachers, but for our leaders as well. And I think when we came back last year, the way the team that went came back was just so full of energy and focus, and it really brought to light all of the things we had been studying throughout the year in the power of the leader as the change agent. And the, I don't know if you remember the picture of all of us standing up above the "Be Bold" sign, and a few weeks ago Jane Bailey was up here saying, "You told me to be bold," and she shared a really great example. So we were very excited to bring on another group of individuals that were, some of whom were joining our district, some of who have been here a little longer, but it was how do we onboard people, or maintain that level of energy and synergy, and keep moving forward? And I think that's exactly what happened. So there were many great sessions. It was really difficult to choose from all that was offered. So one of the other advantages to a group going is you can do some dividing and conquering and come back. So you're going to hear tonight, I'm going to let each one of those individuals introduce themselves, but the title of moving from innovative schools to making sure that we're creating future-focused schools aligned so well with our student achievement objectives. So to get some more details about that conference, I'm going to let each of these individuals talk a little bit, and they'll introduce themselves.
I'm now the principal at Jackson Elementary School. And when we went to the Model Schools Conference, we saw the rigor and relevance framework quite a bit. So the International Center really focuses on rigor, relevance, and relationships. And one of the things that really stuck with us as a group of learners at the conference was the idea of going back to culture, and changing the culture of our district, working on the cultures of our school, which was especially relevant to me, being a new principal. And it really comes down to that, one of my favorite quotes on this slide is that achievement of rigor depends on relationships. We have to have those relationships with students before we can really focus on rigor and relevance. We also, one of the quotes that Dr. Bill Daggett talked about quite a bit was that we need to help every teacher be successful at making sure all students are capable, they support all students to be capable of all that they're being. So it really starts with the whole child. And this is really relevant to our work in schools and our professional learning communities, fostering shared ownership over our students, and constantly reminding ourselves that relationships with kids really come first, and that's what is our first step.
I'm Michelle Thompson. I'm the principal at Emerson for next year, and something, oh.
This year.
This year. We're here. It's this year. Ready or not, here we go. Thanks, guys. So you're just getting to know me, but something that I've been known to have is kind of a hyper-focus on instruction. And so something that was really eye-opening for me when I was at Model Schools, a lot of presenters really talked about those personal skills that students need, and especially Bill Daggett talked about it a lot, the personal skills that students need to be future-ready, skills such as compassion, perseverance, adaptability. And so that's something that really stood out that we're going to bring back to Emerson, where we're working with PBIS to have a monthly focus on each of those personal skills. And so I'm just really excited about that, learning that I had at Model Schools, and that opportunity to educate the whole child, and really help them get future-ready.
I brought a booklet, an example of some of the workshops that we did, if you want to take a peek.
Do you want the next slide, Jen?
The next slide?
Sure, next slide. Thanks. Thanks. So again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to join all of our new team members for this incredible conference. The energy and passion just saturated the conference, and we all returned to Elmhurst, inspired to build on what we learned about rigor, relevance, and relationships. In thinking about our district goals regarding balanced assessment and student engagement, the districts we learned from at Model Schools shared with us several strategies for improving culture, increasing student achievement, and as this slide says, how culture truly trumps strategy. We asked ourselves throughout the conference how we can create future-focused schools with cultures that support change. Each of the workshops we attended highlighted several steps, one of them being, create a comprehensive plan, which we have with our district improvement goals. Two, sustain the plan, which we are doing through each of our school improvement plans. Three, monitor with meaningful student data, which we have embedded within the work of our professional learning communities. And finally, using a continuous improvement model, which is what we have established with our administration's direction and your support.
Oh, I'm Jen Barnaby, over at Lincoln.
Hi, I'm Tim Reardon. I'm the principal at Hawthorne this year. So billing off of what my colleagues said, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to have such a wonderful experience. It was a great team-building experience, but it also reinforced all of the things that we are doing here in Elmhurst that are best for our kids. So I'm going to focus a little bit on what Jen Barnaby said about monitor with meaningful student data, and that's a lot of the work of our PLCs this year. And with the incorporation of, you know, formative assessments, and now Fanta-Simpinell data, I am, my school is also going to pilot the standards-based report cards, so we are going to move forward ahead with anecdotal record-keeping. So we're going to have a variety of sources of data to get a view of the whole child. And so when we're sitting in a PLC, we can make sure that, you know, we're looking at different data sources, and we have a lot of different data points that we can use when we're making decisions based on what's best for students.
Tim, can you please explain what Fanta-Simpinell is?
Sure. So Fanta-Simpinell is a leveling system that we are going to use in the, it'll be all students, it'll be kindergartners that can read, and then all students first through fifth grade. And then what it does is, as a classroom teacher, it gives you the opportunity to see where your students are. So then you can level groups that way, you can make sure kids are reading appropriate books. It's a way to track interventions to make sure they're meaningful, because we want to make sure that kids that are interventions are showing years' growth. And using the Fanta-Simpinell system, that's one way that we can monitor that as well. And then it's just, it's a great tool for teachers, and I think it's really going to help them meet the needs of their students.
Hi. I'm the oldie of the group. I'm Susan Conrery, I'm the principal at the Madison Elementary Childhood Center, and it was wonderful, it was a wonderful opportunity to get to go to this conference with some of the new leaders that are here from elementary. And I can tell you some of the things that I learned is, actually saw more of the vision that was being put in place for the leadership team, from going through this to this Model Schools Conference. And then the other thing that I've learned is really when they were talking about culture trumps strategy, we've been trying and putting in place the systems for professional learning communities, which is a strategy to go ahead and improve student achievement. But without that culture behind it, thinking about all students can learn, going ahead and trying to build that culture so that everybody's in the same frame state of mind, that strategy isn't going to lead to those increased student achievement gains until we get that culture in place that's waiting for that. So that's the big kind of takeaway that I took from this, is I can see we're moving in the right direction with everything, and I'm so excited to be part of the team. So, thanks.
Nope, it's up. Okay. Hi, everyone, nice to see you again. I'm Leslie Weber, principal at Jefferson Elementary. And we are going to talk about, Heidi and myself, a little bit about, excuse me, the storytelling piece of what we learned at Model Schools. So Eric Scheninger is, one of the great things about this part of the conference, and I think my colleagues will be in agreement with this, is that we actually got to sit with Dr. Bill Daggett for a little bit, just our team. We also got to sit with Eric a little bit, just our team, for about a half hour. So it was just the Elmhurst team. So it was great to have some of those personal conversations with some of these presenters who are presenting amongst hundreds of people, and then we could personalize it a little bit to Elmhurst. So that was one of the positive things that we got to see. Not only is Dr. Daggett coming to see us here, but we also got to spend some time planning that with him. And Eric Scheninger is, he's the tech guy. He's the guru of branding your school. He is, he actually got me and helped me sign up with Twitter. And that was a big thing for me, because I do not tweet, and Mary's like, "Tweet?" I'm like, "What are you talking about?" You know, I'm kind of an oldie. So it was exciting for him to share some of his ideas, and, you know, his focus is on establishing and fostering learning environments that are student-centered, collaborative, flexible, and designed to prepare our learners to succeed in the 21st century. He believes that as administrators, we need those skills to transform our school culture, again, alignment with that culture, with effective communication, listening, supporting, shared decision-making, and the integration of technology. And his big theme is, if you don't tell your story, someone else will. And as a leadership team, we feel like we really want to tell our story, what's happening in our schools, what's happening in the district, how we really are coming together in positive ways, and all the wonderful things that we're doing. And I think that's our push as a leadership team, with the help of learning from Eric, that we are going to tell our story, and we are going to get all those positive things, and be proactive about all the wonderful things that are happening in our schools.
My name's Heidi Thomas, I'm the principal at Field. And I would have to piggyback off of what Leslie's saying. I think Eric's presentation really did kind of bring home some of the ideas that we had about telling our story, and the positive things that are happening. And one of the pieces that he kind of shared is, in the absence of that communication, the negative rhetoric tends to take hold, and that's kind of what gets out there. And so he shared some practical strategies through blogging, pictures, video, Twitter, Facebook, and how you really can send that message, and, you know, get your message out there of those positive celebrations for staff, and that helps also to kind of build that culture within the district. So I can't thank you enough for allowing us the opportunity to go.
As was mentioned before, we had the opportunity to sit down with both Dr. Daggett and with Eric Scheninger for meetings, which was such a nice, rare opportunity. You don't often get the opportunity to sit down with two bestselling authors and educational researchers, and really get an opportunity to dive into what's going on in your district and get feedback. The good news is that we are really moving in the right direction. I am also new to Twitter as well, even though I am not a building principal, and Dr. Henderson has been monitoring me to make sure that I post things to Twitter, so I am being supervised. But we had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Daggett, his, you know, there were some things that kind of resonate, it was a theme of the conference, but also it resonated in our meeting with him, and it was about having a student-centered mindset in everything that we do. You know, it's critical that when we're developing curriculum, we're developing content knowledge in a way that's relevant for students. It's not just about learning the content, but making sure that it's relevant so that it sticks. We need to implement the curriculum in a setting which is engaging, so that students aren't just being passive in their learning. Our professional learning should be focused on developing the content knowledge, or developing the content and instructional knowledge that builds capacity in our teachers to be able to prepare our students for college careers and citizenship. So everything that we do, whether it's our professional learning, our curriculum development, is all based on student achievement. School improvement was a big, also, theme of the conference, and it was also part of our meetings. It's not just students that will begin learning next week. Our staff is learning too. We should not be afraid to take risks, and that came up over and over again, the culture of pre-for forgiveness, that people should be not afraid to fail, but instead take the opportunity to try something new. Because if we continue to do the same things we've always done in our classrooms, it's not that you'll get the same product, it's that the value of that product will begin to diminish, because our culture is changing around us. We talked a little bit about We surveys. It's a product that is through ICLE. The We surveys use information to help us get not only the finger on the pulse of student achievement, but also on all those intangible things that go into the improvement of instruction and relationships. Because too often we look exclusively at standardized test score data to get an idea of what it is that we need to do to change. The We surveys survey students, staff, parents, and the community, and they talk about things like engagement, whether or not teachers are committed to the mission, or if they believe whether or not they're preparing their students for life outside of their K-12 education, whether or not the community believes that their, you know, students in school are being prepared for life outside of D-205. The survey is tied to the rigor and relevance framework, so it ties together not only our culture, but everything that we're doing from a curricular perspective. When we met with Mr. Scheninger, again, he talked a lot about telling our story, both with and without technology. You know, we should publicize the victories, and we should also be highlighting the hard work of our teachers and our students. It's an opportunity to recognize all of those wonderful things that are going on in our classrooms. The hashtag that we're going to be using is #IgniteD205. So as all of our principals are beginning to put these stories up on Twitter, you'll be able to see what's going on in our school simply by following the hashtag #IgniteD205. The last thing that Eric Scheninger mentioned was, change can be unsettling, people may fear it, people may sometimes just not believe in it. But you can't stop change. It's always going to be there. You can either adapt or get left behind. You can look to Blockbuster Video, Kodak, Bethlehem Steel, and Circuit City as examples of organizations that did not change. They became irrelevant. So he talked about how he supports his innovative, trailblazing teachers by recognizing their work. And eventually, people see these things that are going on, and they want to be like those people. And you start small, but think big, and eventually, things will start to catch up. Because each of our schools has a culture goal as part of their school improvement plan, it's our hope to duplicate some of his successes when he was principal in New Milford here at Elmhurst. I would also like to say thank you very much for the opportunity to attend this conference. It was eye-opening, it was a great opportunity to network, and again, that the presenters are top-notch. There's a lot of different conferences you can attend, a lot of different professional development you can go to, and I can say hands-down in my 18 years, that this has been the best opportunity that I've had at professional learning. So I'm very grateful. Any questions?
Thank you, everyone. I could hear the excitement, the enthusiasm, and that's wonderful, because that is the culture. That's what we want to move forward. I was really interested, and you talked about We surveys. Can you go over that one more time about what they are and how we might use those?
We're looking at collecting feedback as part of the student achievement goals, they're part of the SIP plans. We're looking at having a culture goal. The We surveys are a tool that they use, that we're looking at potentially using with both, it's leveled for students, so there's ways of measuring engagement or rigor as early as, you know, the primary grades up through sixth, or through fifth, and then sixth through 12. But it can also be sent to parents, it can be sent to community members, and to staff. So they have a variety of different surveys, and we're going to be looking into how we're going to implement that.
Yeah, I would just add that they're constructed so that the questions are mirrored, so that it's a perceptual instrument, and you do get data on student engagement, for example, but you also see the perceptions of students versus the perceptions of teachers versus the perceptions of parents. So it gives you kind of a rich perspective on trying to sort through and figure out, you know, where you start and how to tackle certain things. And, you know, when you see some of those differences, it's, it gives you concrete information. So it's not, it's not like this intuitive gut feeling, like, "Oh yeah, I think my students are engaged," or whatever, you know? And so it's actually, when we see, when they present on this, they show you the different questions, and we are pretty intrigued in, you know, looking at this.
So first of all, I just, like, three of my kids will be entering school next week, and they're very different. And so to hear that, you know, your energy about relationships and culture, and that my children will enter a school where everyone is committed to them, not just the classroom teacher, is really exciting, and I think a lot of parents would be really excited to hear that. And so thank you for that, and just your energy to start school and do all this work, because it's a lot of work.
So you can imagine for all of our new principals, what their week looks like from now, leading up until the start of school, and here they are, looking fresh, coherent, you know, able to string sentences together, so it's really, it's really, it's really been just such a great opportunity. So thank you. Thanks, guys. Oh, I'm sorry, Karen.
All right. So I think it was Tim, this came to my mind, if not, anybody wants to chime in. We talk a lot about rigor and relevance and all. And so just to help everyone understand, we talked about beyond content, the relevance. So for me, I look at beyond content as application. So can you help us understand the subtlety of, you've got content, you've got application of the content, but then this relevance piece, so that we know, like, what that looks like in the classroom with the student versus hearing this word, relevance, with what we're trying to do?
I think, so one of the things...
Tim, you want?
Sorry. I'm just going to yell.
There you go. And everyone will hear you.
So what it means is basically, kids learning how to solve problems that matter to them that they understand. I know from being a previous teacher and teaching Eureka math, a lot of the math problems that you do in Eureka math are things that kids can relate to. So they're actually solving math problems that are real problems, not just numbers on a page that aren't actually real-world problems. And so when you engage kids in that type, in those types of activities, the conversations that you listen, that students have, is just, it takes everything to another level, and you see the excitement. And students don't realize they're learning, and that's sort of the exciting part. So...
So it adds to what we also talk about is the critical thinking, and all of those, so it's all coming together. And I guess that's where I saw the light bulb coming for me, and I thought it would be helpful for us to talk about it on camera, you know, to our community and parents about how all this stuff starts to come together for the students in the classroom, with the teachers, with why we do, we're investing in the professional development and the time for PLCs, et cetera.
Right.
This is great work. Thanks. And it is very exciting, and I want, maybe Mary, this is a good one for you, if you can give some examples of how to transfer all of this work to the teacher, like, when does that happen, or a couple examples of when there's time to do that?
Sure. So I think probably the word you heard most often throughout every person presenting was culture tonight. And that's something, as a district, we are very heavily focused on, having the best culture possible from, at all levels of the organization, and that's a culture among administrators, among teachers and administrators, certainly among teachers and students and administrators, all to set up the best possible learning environment for our kids. That's the end goal, best possible learning environment. So as you may have heard, each one of our schools will have a goal of their school improvement plan related to culture in their building. So that work that has taken place over the summer, that learning that's taken place in regards to how to enhance your school culture, will be very evident as our leaders go back and work with their school leadership teams, and talk about getting the current state of the culture in their building. And many, many times that's related to collaboration, as we really work at refining and deepening our implementation of PLCs. That's where a lot of the work on culture comes in. But a lot of times it has to do with communication, and how we're communicating with families and among staff members. So there's a lot of different layers to it, but that's a really direct application of where you'll see this learning. Culture, working with school leadership teams, working with all staff as part of school improvement.
I would like to give a specific example. If you recall, last year, we talked about our administrative team studying Fulham's work, coherence, and he's coming to do our Administrator Academy in November. And so when you talk about coherence, we actually build this into everything that we do. So for example, just today, we've got the new teachers in here, and there's two things I would say. Number one, the instructional coaches is huge in terms of this, you know, and building it in and translating it to the classroom level. But, so the new teacher academy, the various different strands, when we talked about our teacher evaluation system, Dr. Wohl really hit the student engagement piece. The instructional coaches had sessions on the rigor and relevance framework, PLCs, learning targets, et cetera. So everything we do is always directly tied together. It's not in isolation, where it's just, you do this, then you do this. It's, we're bringing it together, and I just thought the new teacher academy was one specific example. It just happened today that, you know, can give you a concrete example.
Well, and I think just to build on what Dr. Moyer's saying, so it's not just that our new educators are learning about what's the rigor and relevance framework. Because those sessions were all led by our current instructional coaches, they're talking about direct application to classroom practice. So already, they're taking it beyond. And I would guarantee that our new educators, by the time their week of new educator academy is over, there's not a one who couldn't identify very clearly for us what our district priorities are, because it comes through in everything that we're doing explicitly, and kind of inferred through all of the work and application that's being done. Okay. Next up is, Dave, do you know which one's middle school? So next up is our middle schools. We sent leadership teams from all three of our middle schools to support our implementation of the new middle school model. So they are going to go into a nice overview of what they did in San Diego.
All right. I get to kick this off, and I'm very happy to do that. We took a highly motivated, energetic, and passionate group of people with us to the... oop, maybe we did. No, there we go. I got it now. So anyway, here's the list of participants who went. Each school took five teachers, and then each middle school principal went, and we supported all of our learning through that, and you're going to hear a lot about that tonight. And it's just great that we were able to have so many of them come, that they took such a great interest in it. Here's a picture of us in San Diego. We were outside on a sunny day. And so... And so, I'm going to pass it off to Carrie, and then I'm going to jump back in in a minute. I'm, oh, I'm Linda Farrenbacher, I'm the principal at Sandberg. We're going to have everybody introduce themselves. So it's that one. You want me to do it?
Before we introduce now, or as we do?
As you do it, as you do your slide.
Okay, great. Linda, are you going to continue to click?
I'll do the clicking for you.
Okay, fantastic.
I'll stand here.
So, hi, I'm Dr. Carrie Emrickson. I'm the psychologist at Sandberg with my personal clicker, Linda Farrenbacher. Thank you all. So I thought, I get to start out with talking a little bit about what the Association for a Middle Level Education is, as to why it was important and why we attended this. So, we decided that their mission statement was really important for the board to hear about. It's dedicated to improving the educational experiences of young adolescents, and we feel that is our passion and most important piece of us. So to provide vision, knowledge, and resources to all of us that serve them, and all of you, in order to develop healthy, productive, and ethical citizens. So we felt their goals really align with our passions well. Linda, thank you. So what we started out with, and this kind of ties back into Middle School Task Force from the last couple of years, is that we read their monograph here. And so, many of you have already received a copy of that, but Linda has a personal copy now for Kara, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll enjoy it, we really enjoyed reading it, too. And so, it was a big source of information, not only for Middle School Task Force, but to help guide us along with AMLE. So along with that, there are three main characteristics we felt to guide a well-rounded middle school education. And these include these three attributes. And just to see on the start that there are many other guiding and supporting characteristics along with those, but the three sections that we focus on, and that our presentation will review, are curriculum, instruction, and assessment, leadership and organization, and then culture and community. So we kind of tie right into the previous presentations.
Okay. Oh, sorry. And the attributes, within those three attributes, there are 16 characteristics that have been identified, that support the learning that we had, but they also support the, the best practices for middle schools. And we are incorporating that in our building leadership teams, in our PLCs, and in our interdisciplinary teams. And our goal is to create a culture of connectedness and developmental attributes and, and learning for all kids. And so this is going to tie into the work that we're getting ready to share now. We're going to talk about teaming interdisciplinary work, shared leadership, and the middle school concept. Hand it off to you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Skinner. I'm from Churchville Middle School, and I was also part of the Middle School Task Force. So it was exciting to hear the previous presentation, and so much talk about culture, and creating that positive school culture. Because as we welcome our new staff, as Dr. Moir mentioned, implement schedule changes for this year, and adopt new math and English curriculum, we're really excited about the opportunities we have, co-teaching and developing interdisciplinary models. So it's critically important to the improvement of our school to focus on creating a positive school culture.
I'm Mike Johnson, I'm from Bryan Middle School, also served on the Middle School Task Force. I'm the guy that went. My wife didn't appreciate the pictures I sent her. But school culture keeps coming up, because it's just that important. And so, what we really want to do is identify who the stakeholders are. Stakeholders is kind of a buzz term, just for all the people who have a vested interest in making a successful school and accessible, a successful district. And of course, it's between the administrators and teachers, the teachers and the teachers, the teachers and students, the students and their families, the families of the administration. But beyond that, it's identifying what that positive culture is. It's not holding grudges, but it's also not just having a smile on your face as the building falls apart, it's really having that growth-oriented mindset, and, and taking a look at situations, and find out how we can build stronger schools. You know, of course, it's incredibly important for the administrators of the schools, little secrets, the administrators have already been doing that, and the teachers as well. But looking from the teacher's perspective, it's finding out who the other teachers in the buildings are, and the building is, and activating that in them as well, and lifting them up, and finding ways to create leaders within them. But also finding that within the students as well, and giving them a voice, and giving them a charge in the building, and helping them create that identity as part of the building as well.
I have to click on it.
Thanks.
That's why Linda's doing all the clicking.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Skelatin.
And I'm Katie Hirsch.
We're seventh grade teachers at Bryan Middle School. AMLE is focused on building stronger teams and PLCs that benefit both teachers and students. One way that they talked about having effective teams is consistency. This can include consistency just from, are all your teachers on your team greeting your students at the door as they walk in at the beginning of the class? Or consistency, what is the bathroom procedure? Something so simple, teachers can have different within their classes, but if we all make that consistent across our team, it's easier for students to transition throughout the day. Effective teams also include shared accountability. This is, these are our kids, not just your kids, they're all of ours. So we are working towards our students' success, and not just focused on an individual teacher's core subject area. Which leads into the final. To have an effective team is to incorporate interdisciplinary units. This can be across all subject areas, or it can focus on maybe two subject areas, like math and science are easy to overlap, or English and Sosh. Which again, leads back into consistency, so they're getting the same message across all subject matter, and not just in the math classroom. They're seeing it multiple times.
And that ties right into an effective PLC or professional learning community. There were many sessions offered about that, which was very exciting, since we are a PLC district. And so, it was really a focus on the collaborative team, and focusing on the root cause, or what is the problem, and what is the solution? And so, they kind of instilled in us this idea of a data chat, within your PLC, where it would kind of, you'd be focused on four questions. So one being, what do we expect the students to learn? So making sure your PLC, you know, has goals and the set expectations. Then, how do we know that they're learning it? So looking at assessment, formatives, summatives, and looking at that data. So they really did, it was called data chat, so making sure that PLCs are focused on data. And then, how do we respond if they don't learn it? So then, maybe transitioning into the intervention period. And then, how will we respond if they do know it, or they do master it? So then, that's an avenue for acceleration. So it was just a great experience for us to learn about how we can make our PLCs more effective.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Lapenna, I'm department chair at Sandberg, Science Department Chair.
Kelly Harkins, I'm one of the eighth grade team leaders at Sandberg.
And I'm Emily Barnes, I teach seventh grade math at Sandberg as well. One of the biggest takeaways for us from the conference was the use and discussion of engagement strategies. One of the focuses for, in the 16 characteristics, is using appropriate engagement strategies to help bring the teachers and students together in hand-joined activities. They also talked about how the use of engagement can really foster ownership with the students, and giving them a role inside of the classroom. We, in turn, that would cause, in turn, that would create a genuine learning community as well.
And there was a breakout session about engagement strategies, but apart from that, throughout the entire conference, we saw multiple engagement strategies used by the presenters, and some of them are listed here. And as a wide range of teachers that we had participate, team, sorry, grade-level teachers, support staff, counselors, we are prepared to take these strategies back and share them with our teams, and to be able to use them in our classes. We've seen multiple, multiple strategies in action at the conference, and many more were explained in an engagement strategies breakout session.
So as Chrissy mentioned, we practiced a lot of these engagement strategies, and we had them used on us, where we were up in our meetings practicing these different things in order to take away that information. So we just wanted to sort of relay again, why they had us doing that, and the characteristics from this we believe that it supports. And certainly, that is for students and teachers to be engaged in purposeful, active learning, for all of us as educators to use multiple learning approaches, to really help every student be engaged throughout class, to help every student succeed every day, that learners are committed to and knowledgeable about this age group, what the educational research says for middle schoolers, and that our organizational structures are giving us time to build good relationships with our students, and have meaningful learning moments throughout each day.
Hi, I'm Laura Johnson, I'm one of the reading specialists over at Bryan Middle School.
I'm Suzanne Creer, and I'm the sixth grade reading specialist at Churchville.
So, we were super excited to see sessions on co-teaching, because it is something that all three middle schools have been kind of playing with and starting to implement. And so it was really good to see that this supports best practices and things that we could be doing. So there are six models for co-teaching, one teach, one assist, team teaching, teach, one teach, one observe, station teaching, parallel teaching, and alternative teaching. And what's really nice about this is, a lot of times when people think, oh, my child in a co-taught class, there must be something wrong. But that's not always the case. So co-teaching is great, because it helps students who struggle, but it also helps kids that are maybe gifted or accelerating. Because when you are able to use these six different models in the classroom with two equal stakeholders, two people there for the kids, you can really just differentiate that learning. A lot of this piggybacked off of the model schools that we heard, which was really great to see. And I liked what Mary had said, that we shouldn't learn in isolation, so we shouldn't risk-take in isolation either. And that really is what co-teaching is about. You've got those two teachers together, one specialist, maybe a generalist, and they get to really do what's best for the kids and differentiate that instruction.
So I just wanted to share a little personal story. Oh, sorry? So I co-taught social studies last year. So we had a wide variety of learners in our class. So we had struggling readers, we had ELL students, but we also had reach kids. So when we were approaching co-teaching, we were like, huh, how is this going to work? And what we found over the course of the year is, all the students' lives were much richer for the experience. We were able to kind of switch up the social studies curriculum, and make it more project-based learning. So they were, we were able to really challenge our gifted students, and we were also able to support our struggling learners. And what we found is, they really learned a tremendous amount from each other. So by the end of the year, we were able to do a Julius Caesar murder mystery, where they were all debating who they thought did it, and were very knowledgeable and able to use all kinds of evidence. So it was just really cool to see them kind of evolve into this wonderful classroom over the course of the year. So, just so you know, how we pick the co-teachers that teach together, is, we're looking for teachers to work together who have different areas of expertise. So you might see a special education teacher in a science classroom. They would have time to collaborate together, the science teacher would be the content expert, where the special ed teacher would be the expert on how to differentiate, how to support all learners. So you're kind of getting the best of both worlds. And as Laura was telling us, this is never going to be a situation where there's one teacher teaching, and the other one's kind of hanging back. It really is an intermassive system. And what we found is, the kids just had a lot of fun with this kind of co-teaching environment. They were very engaged, and we were very engaged. So I thought it was a really positive experience.
And the last, the last slide here just kind of highlights the benefits for teachers for co-teaching, and some for students as well. Really, when we all learn together, we all grow together. Co-teaching is just a really great way to make sure those things are happening.
Okay, I'm Jackie, the supervisor and the principal from Bryan.
And I am Gina Pogreter, the principal at Churchville.
And we are going to wrap it up.
Hard 20 minutes. Hard 20.
We hear you. The attendance at the AMLE Leadership Conference helped us to continue to fulfill our district's mission, to meet the educational needs of all students, challenging each to his or her full potential, and ensuring a foundation for future success in life. This conference helped us to continue our work with our two student achievement objectives, assessment, and engagement. We continued to explore ways to increase the use of data to personalize instruction through the work occurring in our PLCs. Our school leaders were also able to connect with other teachers to discuss block scheduling, and to formulate our acceleration time. We went to sessions that inspired us all to be stronger leaders, and we reflected and discussed the importance of participating in critical conversations. Our district vision states that District 205 will be a national leader in educating children of all backgrounds. This conference enabled our staff to connect with other school leaders, and share and model our practice with educators from all over the nation.
And as Jackie connected our learning to the D205 mission and vision, our experience at the AMLE conference is helping us determine next steps in developing a true middle school experience in Elmhurst. As some of you may have heard, middle school will look and feel a little different next year, and we're very excited about that. Each one of us who attended the AMLE conference specifically went in with a mindset of bringing back information and ideas to our teams, and, and when, and bringing it all together. And tonight, you heard some of those. You heard about acceleration, you heard about the team concept, and how we're going to support our PLCs, and a lot about co-teaching and interdisciplinary work. So we're bringing that all together. And while we have many changes within the middle schools this year, we are excited about the opportunity to build the best possible educational environment for our students. Thank you so much for allowing us to attend this national conference, and meet with schools from around the world, in different stages of the process of creating a true middle school experience. And we are very excited to get started. Thank you.
So first off, thank you very much for attending, and then bringing the information, not back, not just back to us here at this board meeting, but every day with the students, during the school year and outside the school year. So I'm really intrigued in two topics. One is the co-teaching and specific examples, beyond what you did, which was wonderful, so thank you. And then, two, the middle school experience. It sounds as though, in the wrap-up and previously, that you were around peers in other districts, nationwide, worldwide, that are already doing what we're moving to this coming year. And I hear that there's, there's information that you have, right? I would love for you to share some of that with us.
Use my teacher voice, but apparently it's not loud enough. For co-teaching, so at Bryan Middle School, with co-teaching last year, last school year, and we're also going to be working more with it this year. The way we did it was, I co-taught, I'm one of the reading specialists, I co-taught sixth grade English with two of the sixth grade English teachers, and then the other reading specialist had co-taught English with a seventh and eighth grade English class as well. What was really neat about that, was the kids that we saw in intervention were also put in those co-teaching classes. So I was able to see some of the kids that I work with three times a day, that way, by having that block, and then in an intervention period. A lot of the kids, I mean, they showed a lot of growth, being able to be in the classroom with them. It also allowed me to really tailor and set goals with them, more specifically to the work they're doing in the classroom, to the intervention class, so they could see, this is my goal, this is what I'm working for. And then it even got the kids toward the end of the school year, to start goal-setting themselves on a Google Doc. So they would look at their data and information and say, well, I wasn't as high as some of the other kids, but for me, that was huge growth. And that's really what it's about, where they kind of stop comparing themselves to others. So that's kind of a specific example. And again, we're going to kind of keep trying to grow that again this year. So I actually ran a little session at the conference, where I was able to talk with people from Hawaii and Canada about co-teaching. And it was really neat, because a lot of the times, they were saying, they've only co-taught with the idea of helping students with special, with special needs or IEPs. And so this was kind of a neat discussion for us to have, where, what if we just look at our Tier Two kids? Those kids that are kind of just in the middle there? If we do something for them within that classroom in real time, how much can we get them to grow? And maybe we can completely avoid that IEP. So that was...
Just to piggyback on her a little bit, I think one of the really important things about co-teaching is having co-plan time. So the principals have always been really great about giving us that time. So as the sixth grade reading specialist, I met every day with the English team. So I would see data real time, where kids were struggling, and I was able to change sometimes what I would be doing in my reading strategies class, based on the data that we saw that day. So that's where the PLC became so crucial, because we were examining the data so closely. And then, we were able to plan, not just intervention classes, but how are we going to use flexible groupings in the classroom? Here's this group of kids, they're not in a reading intervention, but this is what they're struggling with. And then we were able to collaborate, just as a whole English team, on how to improve the experience for all students. the experience for all students.
Any other questions?
Well, the middle school experience, that was co-teach.
Are you referring to like the acceleration intervention blocks specifically? Okay. Well, so I did go to a session and was part of a couple of conversations regarding that. And as far as the AMLE Leadership Conference, it was a wide variety mix of people who are wanting to implement where we kind of are. Some that are, you know, just finished their first year of doing it, and were kind of scrambling to figure out what they could change, and others that have been doing it for a long time. So when you're sitting in a room full of all those different ideas, one thing immediately starts to happen is you feel overwhelmed with all the different ideas. From a person sharing an idea, and you think, wow, that's really not a good idea, to another person. There was one guy was talking about, they had guilds, and the guilds competed. It was very Harry Potter-like. Seemed very well organized. And, you know, my, my immediate reaction, I was in there with somebody, I don't know, I don't remember who it was. My immediate, 100% it was, was trying to figure out, well, would that work for us? Well, would that work for us? And in the end, we have to find what works for us the best. And I know that kind of seems trite and easy thing to say, but in reality, I've been part of conversations already this summer, and, you know, the emails have started to go out already about the acceleration block and different ideas and submitting your ideas. And the conversation, conversations I've been a part of, a lot of teachers know what they want to try or what the need is. But then there's always the, the second part of that conversation of, well, we'll really get a better idea by January, and we can kind of reevaluate, or by the, by May and next year, we can build. And then, that's, that goes back to that growth mindset of, we have a, we have, it's not quite as hazy, but it's not quite as crystal clear, but it's going to continue to adapt and evolve based on our needs. I know Dr. Henderson even alluded to that last year with part of the task force is, which is, this will evolve and this will develop. And that's very much part of what, what we're all aware of. So taking all those, those ideas really kind of displays, every school is creating something and meeting those needs to their variety of students. But we have a different variety of students. We need to find out what their needs are, and that will continue to grow. And so kind of maybe bringing that growth mindset back to our buildings. And hopefully that answers it. It's not a very specific answer, but we'll know a lot more specifically what that answer is probably this time next year.
Well, I think what I would add on to Michael's response is, as I look at this team that went to San Diego, and I think about the three-hour meeting that I had with the acceleration committee from the three middle schools this morning, some of the members are here in the room. We have some who are team leaders that are in this group, some who are a part of Middle School Task Force. So what we're really seeing is this diffusion of leadership and building capacity amongst all of our teachers. And that's really what we want. We want the leaders to come from within the teachers themselves. And we talked a lot at our meeting this morning about fostering a culture where teachers are comfortable taking risks, and that where they have that trust and confidence that it's okay to take a risk, and it may not go 100% the way they thought it would, and that's okay. And so that was a lot of our conversation, is how do we continue to support and foster that? Because ultimately, that's what's going to get the best results for our students, is when we have teachers who are willing to step out there and not be afraid to try something that they really believe is going to be best for kids.
Okay, thanks, guys.
So as, just as a quick bridge here before Mary introduces the next group, the board has asked, you know, to, to try to make sure that there's the connectivity between the plan and the objectives and, and the clarity between the information in the, in these board, you know, presentations and, and the actual plan itself. So in the student achievement objectives, there's, there's an area in there, Integrated Service Delivery Model. Co-teaching is a part of that, for example. We, we have, one goal is increased student engagement, all grades EC12. So Kagan Cooperative Structures are, are part of that objective. And so I'm hoping that people see the interrelatedness of all these ideas, but I just wanted to kind of be specific and make sure people weren't losing anything in translation there.
All right. So our final presentation for this evening is about student engagement, and specifically about Kagan. You've heard Kagan referred to and discussed several times, beginning, I think it was this time last year, where we had a group who had gone to a Kagan conference. So I'm going to ask our team to come up. And they're going to share just a little bit.
Thanks. Good evening. Thanks for having us here today. I'm Jim Plaskota. I'm the principal of Edison Elementary School. And earlier this summer, we had the opportunity to go to a conference five days in Lyle, Illinois. We didn't travel. We stayed within town. So it was really nice to be able to go home to our own homes, not have to stay in a hotel. But we had some great people with us. We had 13 people from the school district attending this conference in Lyle. And we expect or look at this as being a great opportunity to continue to have students engaged in learning. About a year ago, you had the opportunity to hear from some administrators and how they experienced the Kagan strategies at another conference that they went to. Well, today, we have some of those, we have four of those nine, four of those 13 teachers here to share with you their experiences from the conference, how they think it's going to be changing their experience in their classroom, and how they think it's going to engage their students in learning. Lisa Ferraris.
Can we get to the right slide? I think we have, oh, there we are. So I'm Lisa Ferraris, and I am our English learner coach at Fisher School. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of allowing us to go to the Kagan Academy. So I looked at this from my perspective of how I can help implement this with staff as well, for all of our students. And ideas that came to mind was that we were, would do some lunch and learns, and try to implement for most of our staff how we're going to get these structures across to our teachers, as well as modeling them in classrooms with our teachers. And I actually had an opportunity to do some of that last year around our Eureka Math, because Fisher had implemented the new math program schoolwide. Also, in some co-teaching and adding structures to make us C-teachers. And what that means is the difference between group work and actual cooperative learning. They call the A and B teachers. A teachers are basically doing group work. B teachers, sometimes it's group work, sometimes it's collaborative, and really seeing our C teachers being those, setting up those collaborative structures. And a way to also do that is attending our team PLCs and getting that information across to teachers. And even when working with them, looking at some of the different units of study and lessons that we're doing, and where can we add these structures in? And particularly, what intrigued me was the way that these Kagan structures support our four domains of literacy. Fisher's, obviously, approximately half of our students are EL learners, and another large chunk of them are recent exits, meaning that they were former English learners. And let's face it, we're all English learners. So I just pictured their little faces and how some of them are just so shy and not as willing to take those risks, if you will, to participate in class. And a big component of Kagan is their, is their, kind of a motto, I guess. Why call on one when you can call on everyone? So it just really gets kids in that safe environment where they can, kind of, you're working with partners and small groups before you're taking those risks in, as a whole class. Hi there. And another way of trying to implement these would possibly be at late starts and using them with the staff. And not only are we building, team building with our students, but team building with our staff as well, which will lead us into our next one. Erin?
Thanks. Oh, it looks different.
I know, instead of mine.
Oh, that's okay. I'm Erin Waddell. I teach fifth grade at Lincoln. I want to thank you for letting us go to this conference, everyone. It was by far the best conference I've ever been to. It was five days, and I thought, how could we possibly be busy for five whole days? And we were. It was nonstop, and it was, it was so educational for us. We left the conference so excited to implement these structures in our classroom. And so thank you so much. We got together, I think, less than two weeks after the conference to put together slides and a presentation for our second Institute Day this year. So we're ready to go with teaching them to our staff. So thank you very much, everyone. So we started doing this last year at Lincoln because Kathleen and Tim had both attended the conference. And so we were pretty familiar with it. And the great thing about Kagan is that it's very easy to implement, and it does go, I find, hand in hand with our district goals of establishing culture within our buildings and within our district, among our buildings. So one goal that every teacher has throughout the year and throughout, especially in the beginning, is establishing a safe and welcoming environment for your students, and to be able to make sure that they are comfortable in sharing their ideas and discussing with their classmates. So Kagan just naturally does that. You do activities to, called class building, where you establish culture within your classroom. And there's games and there's, but educational games. But great ways to have students work together, talk together. Like Lisa said, why have one answer when they all can answer? It's, it's a great way for establishing culture. Students are then sat in specific areas, usually in groups. They then establish their team. They create a team name, they create a team handshake, they become very comfortable with each other. And last year, this mat, a Kagan mat, was used on our first Institute Day with our staff. And Kagan, like I said, is very easy to implement. So we used this very effectively at our first Institute Day. And I'll let you look at that. With using this mat, students will immediately have, probably, I've came up with 12 ways for students to be paired or mixed up with different students within their group and within their class. So the teacher doesn't have to worry about taking time to mix up her students or his students. They can just say, please, all the fours go over here, or please work with your face partner, shoulder partner, and all students are actively engaged because they're all talking. So it works out very, very well. I know I'm out of time, sorry. With this presentation that we came up with for Institute Day with our schools, we came up with a few other Kagan structures that are very, very easy to implement. And those two are stand-up, hand-out, pair-up. And it's just a quick way, again, for students to pair up with someone. You just, they stand up, they raise their hand, quickly pair up with someone who is very, very close to them in proximity, so they don't go find their friend every time. And they discuss whatever you're working on. They can then do a pairs pair, which is pair up with the next pair that's closest to them, and you automatically have a group of four. So these are really, really quick. It's not something that, Kagan's not something that you have to wait a month to implement with, in teachers' classrooms or within the district. It can be done week one, very, very fast. And it can be taught very quickly, staff meetings, Institute Day, and it's, we're very excited about it. We were engaged the whole time. So, thank you.
Okay, hi. I'm Laura Ryan. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Edison School. And I want to echo what, what Erin said, in that I've been teaching here in Elmhurst for 20 years, and this was one of the best conferences I've been to. I can, I can name a few others that have, have had such an impact on how I teach and how I can help kids to learn. And I think this is one of them. I want to thank you for allowing me to attend the conference. Not only has it convinced me of its positive effects on student learning, but it has energized and it's excited me even more to begin this next school year. And after 20 years, to be excited, I feel very, very blessed to have this opportunity. Our first learning in the course was to distinguish types of teaching models. They were explained in an earlier presentation and tonight, as the traditional model, the group work, and the cooperative model of learning. Knowing that students learn best when they interact, I recognized group work being used in my teaching most often. Because I knew that when students interact, that's when they learn best. Although I was always troubled, because I was assured that while students work, learning would happen, it would happen magically through these interactions. But the Kagan structures that were taught to us have given me that piece of the puzzle that was missing, because we're directing student learning in an engaging way so that all students are interacting. Well, I got to tell you, I was hooked, if I can advance, I was hooked when they came out with the research that said, over 1,000 studies have proven cooperative learning's positive effects on academic, social, emotional, and cognitive development. I thought, you can't refute 1,000 studies. So this has to work, and I need to learn more about this. These Kagan structures provide, they provide a concrete method for teachers to guide student learning. They organize the classroom instruction. They're content-free. They're repeatable and applicable to all grade levels. And they're even low-tech. We don't hear that too often anymore. Beyond the training, there's $0 to implement and to maintain. I found that really great. When using these structures optimally, there's evidence of positive interdependence between students. They interact in a positive way. And we know that affects their risk-taking and their learning. There's an individual accountability for each student. Every student participates equally. I was one of those students who would hang back and just kind of watch. But you don't have that opportunity. With, with Kagan structures, you have to be involved. You have to be engaged. And there's also simultaneous interaction. I want to thank you again for your time and for working together and our commitment to continually raise student learning and achievement here. And I am confident that all teachers would benefit from the Kagan structures. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you guys so much for giving us the opportunities for these professional developments. As a music teacher, I have been starved for these kinds of opportunities that have been relevant, not just to the music classroom, but something that I feel more closely relates me to the other classroom teachers in the building. So often, this is my second year in this district, and so often in the past, I've been told, no, we're going to, we're going to save that for the classroom teachers. We're going to save that. So thank you for allowing that. I actually asked my wife if I could bring my toolbox with me today, because I was able to go to the Kagan and the PLC conferences this summer. And I just feel like my toolbox is so full. It is, all these great strategies and structures between PLC and Kagan, and the way that they intertwine is so wonderful. It's not two separate things. They can very, very easily be implemented together. But one thing I noticed about Kagan, it's sort of like that one tool I don't keep in my toolbox, my screwdriver. It's something that I have readily available all the time, something that I can use whenever I need it, even if I don't even realize that I need it. There's over 300 structures to Kagan and that allow you to be able to use it very purposefully to very specific situations within your classroom. And as we go through, it's so exciting to see how they could do it. And the first day I went, I was like, okay, how do I implement this in my class? Because they're talking about getting four desks and having the kids all sitting close to each other. And that's a common problem for a lot of the Unified Arts. Well, this is something with the mats, with some of the other ways, very easy to implement within Unified Arts. It's actually something that I'm going to be going through with the other specialist teachers next Monday, and teaching them and kind of brainstorming with them ways that this can be implemented in their classrooms right away. How well do I know it can be implemented right away? I was teaching summer choir this year. First year we had it, so thank you for allowing us to do that as well. And I used it the first day after the first conference in the evening. And the culture within my choir class changed instantaneously. From the first two weeks that I had choir, to the last three weeks that I had choir, was completely different. Our accompanist was like, what are you doing? I've never seen this happen in a choir setting before. This is awesome. And it wasn't because I was doing anything else but getting the students more engaged in what we were doing and how we were learning the music, making sure that they were analyzing it together. Not saying, say, everybody know what key this is in. Some hands go up, I call on one person. And, and what it does is it really forces them to pay attention more. It forces them to be actively engaged and to feel like they're in a safe environment. The safety comes with safe academic risk-taking and safe socially. So as they So, as they come together, they feel like they're safe, that they can take risks, academic risks, and make mistakes without feeling embarrassed, without feeling like, I have no idea. Because it's centered around the idea of, you can say, I don't know, and your classmates, your group, will help you come to that answer together. It's very nourishing, allows students who would otherwise be very reserved feel more comfortable within a smaller setting. And engaging for all students, where you used to have maybe one or two students answering a question, you have the majority of the class being engaged and teaching each other and talking it out if they don't understand with each other. And if they have a question, after they've talked together, then they can ask the teacher if they, if none of them know the answer, which is, which is wonderful. We have to be very purposeful with Kagan, though. If we do it, we need to make sure that they are planning for it, make sure they're explaining it to the kids, especially as we're starting out, saying, all right, everyone, we're going to do this, but we got to be very specific about what you're doing, modeling it, practicing it, and then reviewing it. That was a big thing that Kagan was teaching us, is that as we are going through these strategies with the kids, thinking about how we could do it better the next time, thinking about how we can get more kids actively engaged in the lesson the next time. Calling the structure by its name. Kagan has fun names for all of its structures, and so one of the examples is here, okay, everyone, when I say go, let's share what we know about the Renaissance era with our face partner using a rally robin. Go. And it just allows the students very quick and very specific way to interact with each other. And the rally robin, they know how they're supposed to take turns, one sentence each so that nobody's dominating the conversation, and then there's a lot more people having those conversations together. The next thing that they encourage us is not to overdo it. There's 300 structures within Kagan. And so, one thing that they really tell us to do is focus on a few, focus on one. Kindergarten classes, they say, some of them, just do one for a while before these kindergartners go on to all these other ones because sometimes it's difficult for them to just stand up and pair up. Sometimes they'll stand up and walk away. And so, then one of the things they do is like really helping them to practice this because it's also that social interaction. Kagan's very big on the social interaction, making sure the kids are used to communicating with each other. And the last thing is you have to celebrate student success. Not just us, but they are celebrating each other's success. So that whenever they share ideas with each other, all right, tell your partner, I'm so glad that you shared your ideas, or tell your partner, that was really great, or tell your partner, and so you actually prompt them until they get used to doing it themselves. And so, celebrating that student's success, not just as the teacher, but as students to each other, is really important.
Hello. I am Gina Pogue Reader, and I am back. I actually did the five-day last summer, and I loved it. I felt the exact same way that they did. And so, I took it to the next level this summer and did two two-day conferences, one on coaching and one on cooperative meetings. And I know that is very hard to read, it was not yellow before, I swear. But what, this slide really, to me, and it says a lot about our coaching that we're bringing in and how much we value it too. But if I could even just show you that through coaching, if we're just presenting topics, we're all going to acquire a bit of knowledge. But will it transfer over to a different setting? And the answer, without coaching, it doesn't. So, if we were just presenting, giving, giving feedback afterwards, if we saw, were watching in the classroom, if it was going to stay in the worksite, it's really at about 10% transfer rate. But with coaching, with support in the moment, it jumps to between 85 and 90% transfer rate. So, that's really where that practice of coaching comes to, into play. And so, when I was at the coaching session, Kagan coaching is very specific, it is in the moment. And as Jeremy was talking, as a music teacher, think about a music teacher or a coach, they're not waiting until entire performance is over or the game is over to give feedback on what happened in the first quarter and how you could have changed it. Kagan coaching is right then, it's in the moment. So, it's very supportive of staff where you're watching and you're giving feedback, this is awesome, this is great, let's tweak this one thing, and they fix it right then and there. That's what they remember, and they feel it, and they feel the immediate correction. And it's a very positive growth moment for both the observer and the observee. In the cooperative meetings, I think we all know that, and we've heard a lot about wanting to make sure our students are engaged, we adults need to be engaged too. If we're in a, in a meeting and we don't set up the environment, we've got laptops up, we're hanging with our friends, we, we know that. And so, it's really having that cooperative structure to meetings, not only to make sure that everybody's involved, but it's also building relationships as well. So, the cooperative meetings, I'm very excited to bring back because not only are we modeling what we want our teachers to do, they're feeling it. They're feeling how much better that experience is. So, I loved both of these sessions, I highly recommend them to everybody who's done the five-day. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Well, and I see on your slide, Gina, I think having pie at all of your meetings, like, that is awesome.
Do you guys remember the hand motions last year?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
The positive interdependence, simultaneous interaction.
Okay. Any questions for this group?
First of all, thank you all for attending, and the thing that I think I love about this is you're saying that it's quick and easy for teachers to implement, which I think in a year where there's a lot of changes, to be able to say this is a quick, very effective thing you could add to your classroom is really positive, and I love your energy. The other thing I just wanted to ask you, Mary, is just, are you, like I heard them maybe allude to, are they sharing at Institute Day, or how is this getting, getting to the rest of their other teachers?
How does it spread? Yes. So, last year, our coaches all attended a training as well. So, when you, I'm not sure who was talking about it, but where they talked about how they use them within their staff meetings to introduce the structures to staff and then provide then strategies, how to take that back to their classroom. We did that as leaders last year in our principal meetings, we used Kagan structures so that principals who didn't necessarily go to a training are still getting immersed in it. At our Institute Day in January, where we did breakout sessions for staff to choose, there were several that were targeted for Kagan structures. And then, since our coaches have gone through training, it allows coaches then to work with grade-level teams, individual teachers, modeling strategies, and supporting teachers that way.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the examples, because I got a better sense of, you know, you go to this professional development, and a lot of times, it just stays there. But for you to share how you're bringing, you brought it from last year to this year, and it, it is the way that you do business, basically, that, that is, that's a good investment for us and you, right? And for the district and the students and the community. And then, Jeremy, you specifically saying, you immediately brought it back and implemented it, how you did it and the results is, is very good. So, thank you all for sharing those sort of examples so that we understand how it gets from your summer professional development into the way that we kind of do the business, how you individually are. But then lastly, I was going to ask the same question of Kara, so thank you for sharing, that you then bring it to your peers through, whether it be an Institute Day or PLCs or those opportunities. Jeremy, I think you said already, you've met with some of your peers, that's how we spread it and, and help each other. So, thank you.
This team met a week after, oh, sorry, sorry. This team met a week after the conference, and so we had all of this information fresh in our minds. We actually went through our, our books, we looked through strategies, we wanted to find strategies that we could actually bring into our staff meetings that we're going to be talking with, with staff members next Tuesday. So, at Edison, practically our entire, our entire Institute Day professional development is going to be Kagan-related. We have, I think we've developed and looked at about 10 to 12 strategies that we're going to actually show them, but we're only going to be walking out of there expecting them to do one of them. We want them to really understand that, as our team said, we want them to understand what the language is, we want them to understand what they're saying to each other and how it's happening. And that social aspect of it has to really, really come together for our students to be able to learn from each other and engage in each other in their learning. So, we want them to be able to have the opportunity to see how good it is by getting an experience of many strategies, but we only want them to come out of it with one.
I have a clarifying question to that. So, Jim, you're talking about Edison, and I guess what I was thinking about is, yes, a building, but throughout the district, to other buildings, okay.
So, so we had three buildings represented, so Fisher and Lincoln and Edison. And then, as Jeremy talked about, part of the professional learning that he's going to be facilitating on Monday is for the art, music, PE, and Spanish teachers at K-5 from all of our elementary schools. We'll be going through that. So, then it spreads to everyone's building.
And Leslie was involved with Gina last year, so...
And Tammy Poole was as well. So, the field staff engaged in ongoing, year-long learning about Kagan structures.
And we did, you know, at our principal meetings, when we set up our learning teams, we had people that went to the Kagan trainings in each group because every time we went over stuff, we tried to model Kagan strategies for everybody to be able to bring back. So, we, wherever we can, I guess, is the short answer.
So, Erin's, Erin is going to be helping us also with some of the facilitation of Eureka Math, just kind of refreshing some of the professional learning we have on Monday, and that also has incorporated Kagan strategies and structures throughout it. So, just to conclude, I'm hoping that you've heard some just very similar strands and connections to our overall student achievement objectives, our district's mission, how there's similarities while the learning experiences may have been different, they're really focused on very similar topics, student engagement, assessment, culture, relevance, rigor, relationships. I, I think, as I have kind of sat back and listened to these tonight and have looked at the work that's gone on, I'm, I'm very proud as a member of the leadership team under Dr. Moyers' kind of vision that he has set for the district, how all of our efforts are aligning, and that's really going to help set, set us up for the best possible outcomes for our kids, and that, that's the bottom line. So, any, just anything else, or, okay, great, thank you.
Superintendent's agenda, two items tonight, approval of communications consultant.
Okay. The first item, we talked about this going back to the spring, following the conclusion of the Focus 205 report to the board, and the fact that we would be entering into a second round of, second phase, I guess we've been calling it, of facilitating additional community engagement. This is going to probably be a little bit more targeted than the first round, but it would involve various different things from polling and messaging and surveys and focus groups and a variety of different types of things, to focus more on, on the facilities discussion piece and find out what the community is truly willing to support. And, and that is the primary reason to tap into some expertise of people that, that do this, and is essentially their, their, you know, their entire firm is set up to do this. So, I wanted to let Malia explain just a little bit about the process and the rationale for this recommendation, and, and we would ask that you approve this to help us keep the momentum going forward and, and begin to clarify a little bit more specifically exactly what the community is, is interested in seeing as far as next steps go.
Well, in June, we issued an RFP around this topic of community, community engagement, consulting services, and we received only three RFPs. And so, after looking over those RFPs and talking back and forth with each other and also checking with references, we decided to expand that a little bit, and we really sought out other firms that do this kind of services. So, we were able to get three other firms to submit proposals, and again, went through interview process with them, interviewed people as far as recommendations, you know, took a really close look at what they sent in. And as a result of that, we were a little bit torn between two companies, but in the end, we decided to go with Strategies 360 because they're a big company, they're an experienced company, they have a lot of experience working with school districts. They have mainly been working west of the Mississippi, they're in 12 different states. I did actually find this company when I attended my Integra conference in San Antonio this summer, went to a session and then talked with Leslie Rogers, who is their education consultant afterward. And so, Leslie was concerned about the fact that they are located in Seattle. We will be bringing her in on various occasions and having face-to-face interaction, but she really thought it was important for us to have someone who knew DuPage County, who knew Northern Illinois, even though Leslie herself attended Northern Illinois University and is somewhat familiar with the area. So, we spoke with Marcia Sutter, who is of the company Minding Your Business. And so, Marcia and Leslie have been working closely in partnership, so this recommendation, this proposal, is a partnership between Marcia Sutter and, and Leslie Rogers of Strategies 360. Marcia will be the boots on the ground, so to speak. She will be helping facilitate our focus groups, helping with a lot of work that it would be expensive to bring someone in from Seattle every single time we need to have that person in meetings and helping us. So, I think this partnership is a really good one for us. I think it's going to provide us with the, the broad spectrum of services that we need to complete our Focus 205 Phase 2, and so that's the recommendation that we're bringing.
Is there a motion to discuss the item?
I move that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with Strategies 360 for services related to public opinion research and strategic communications for Phase 2 of the Focus 205 Community Engagement Effort at a cost of $59,500 excluding video, print, production, travel costs, and contract with Minding Your Business at $100 an hour not to exceed $15,000 in 2017, 2018. This approves both contracts, I guess. Are these separate contracts? Not a sub-consonant arrangement, right?
No, it's a sub-consonant.
Okay.
Okay, second? Second. Okay, moved by John, second by Kara. Any discussion or questions?
I think this is a really, it might seem like a lot of money for a consultant compared to some of the other consultants we've taken on, but I think this is essential to bring this effort of Focus 205 to the next step, which is to ask more detailed questions. I think everybody was asking, well, what's it going to cost? What's, you know, we can't consider these things in a vacuum, and I think this does, doesn't it take it to that, to that level? I should probably ask that as a question.
I think in particular, the public opinion research is going to be important to help us get an idea of what the community feels. I think we have a really good idea over the last two years, working through Focus 205, of what parents and staff, they've been quite involved, but I feel like we still need to get a handle on what the community at large feels, what they even know about this. And so, I think this kind of a company is going to help us expand our reach and really bring in the larger community.
The other thing I wanted to say is I looked at your matrix score sheet. By the way, this is the way that services should be procured, through competitive process like this, especially with a matrix that lays it all out and scores. And I looked at the high scores of this group, I said, geez, how could a group score so well? I went through their proposals, and it was indeed very effective proposals, what they were presenting, and they were touching on things. The thing that I was most impressed with is their approach of, from the very outset, ask the community, ask the questions first, and then engage in, in your communication strategy after you've asked the questions, and I thought it was very effective. So, it is a very effective proposal, and I think it's a, it's a good idea to bring this firm in. So it is a very effective proposal, and I think it's a good idea to bring this firm in.
I was just going to say, I think, you know, you hit on it. But after doing Focus 205 for two years, you know, there's a part of the community that we just haven't been able to hear from. And I think that, as we move forward, it's important that we do absolutely everything to reach our community as a whole, to really hear what they value and what they want. So they seem like a very quality company that's capable. We've seen what maybe, when it's not as, doesn't work as well, what that looks like. You know, there were some bumps in the road with other things we've done with Focus 205. So I just, yeah, this is a good proposal. Thought they were, and I liked that you have met with, like, you have met with them and seen what they've been able to do, so.
The question that I have, that I hope that you can share without me asking this ahead of time, sorry, Malia, but the point of, just to help the community understand, and actually me too, because you're more familiar with these firms than I am, is that the majority of the cost is for someone in a company that's out in Seattle. And we have a smaller fee for someone who's local, feet on the street. So can you help build the comfort level for us? Because this is a critical project and critical step for us, to build a wider net of communicating, getting feedback and input and support in a wider, our wider community. How does, how do you foresee that happening between 360 and Marcia Sutter, Minding Your Business? Thanks.
Well, if you're asking for kind of a breakdown of who's doing what a little bit, Strategies 360 would be involved with all of our communication strategy and outreach. They would help with message framework. Again, I've mentioned public opinion research and polling, which in itself can be quite expensive. So I was impressed that this is included in their total package. And then they will help, of course, with any kind of informational materials that we want to get out to the community to make sure everybody's on the same page, everybody understands, you know, what we have been looking at, what we want to take a further look at. Minding Your Business, she's more helping to develop and facilitate possibly another facilitating team like we had with Phase 1. We still are going to need a group to help us bounce ideas off of. She'll help with community focus group meetings and school-based informational meetings. And again, would work with attending, like, some of our key working group meetings and that sort of thing, that would be more difficult to have someone come from Seattle. But in terms of the larger company, I mean, they just have such depth. It's interesting because when we sent out the RFP, we actually sent it to specific people that we knew were in the business, and Marcia Sutter was one of those people we sent it to. And she did not respond to the RFP. And I called and talked with her, and I asked her why. And she said, because this is so much bigger than what a one-person shop like myself could do. So she was very happy to partner with Strategies 360 after meeting and talking with them because they have that depth, they have the people, they have the experience. And that's what they bring to the table, is all of that support system that Marcia doesn't have as a singleton. So again, that's why I think it makes for a good partnership. And I wrote to them and asked them, because John, I think, had asked a question about this too. And they said, this is one proposal. The proposal is built on our partnership. And while each person will have certain roles and responsibilities, the two will work hand-in-hand as a team on behalf of the district. Leslie and Marcia, who are the two leads on this, are very comfortable with each other and the proposal, and will be able to hit the ground running this month to begin work on a plan to prepare the district for the work ahead.
All right, so we're saying that Leslie is the lead, she's got all these people on her staff at 360.
Right.
They're very familiar with working remotely.
Yes.
And then working with a local person.
I like this blended approach. To me, it's not, it's not different than what we, it's the same concept. When we start talking about co-teaching, and you have different expertises.
Right.
Different expertise in the same area, providing instruction. And that's what I think this has. This big company has this overall approach. They know, they have the systems, they have the setup, they have all the knowledge base. But, is her name Marcia Sutter? She has the knowledge of the area, which is incredibly important. She can be here and help know the people, which, again, that's another important piece. So that's why, I think this is a really good blend of these two different levels of expertise coming together.
Thank you.
Could you just explain how it will work with Thought Exchange? Because we already approved to work with Thought Exchange. And how will they, or will, I'm assuming they'll work with Thought Exchange?
Of course, of course. Well, Thought Exchange is a very different kind of survey company than your typical, the polling, you know, the typical polling that 360 does. So Marcia has worked with Thought Exchange before. And so we just need to sit down as a team and take a look at what needs to be done first, kind of look at the pacing, the timing, you know, see how it all fits together. But yes, we are definitely committed to a further Thought Exchange survey. In fact, Dave and I will be talking to Thought Exchange tomorrow. And we just have to see how this all fits together. We're all going to be working as a team to make sure this all fits together.
I had a general comment about consultants in general. I think this is a good project for a consultant because it's very specialized work. And it's actually less money than for us to hire a full-time employee and, you know, add to our FTE for our district. So I like this proposal, and I think it's a good use of our money for a consultant for this specialized work. We need a roll call vote. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes, it's five ayes, no nays, two absents, that motion passes.
Next, thank you.
Okay, so we have an architect, we have a construction manager, we have a communications person. And we are going to, very shortly, now that these pieces are in place, bring all of the entities together and begin to solidify some action plans for how we approach engaging people and creating information, sharing information throughout the course of the next several months. A huge piece of that is being able to determine exactly where the community stands on all-day kindergarten, because that will drive a lot of the future planning. And so one of the things that we indicated, again, last spring, was an all-day kindergarten feasibility study. And in the community engagement sessions that we ran, all-day kindergarten consistently rose as a priority. And in the Thought Exchange survey, with the exception of STEM, it was clearly the next highest community priority. And what we found last year, as we were bringing all of this together, people started asking, and John alluded to this earlier, questions like, well, how much would it cost? Or if we implemented it, would we have to give something else up? Or what, how would it be implemented? Where would my kids go to school, et cetera, et cetera? And so while I think conceptually, people, at this point, seem to want us to move in that direction, or at least investigate moving in that direction, some of the specifics of what they would be willing to support are things that we need to learn. And it will drive a lot of the other decisions that ultimately end up getting made. So the proposal for you for the all-day kindergarten study would be to recommend hiring Steve Corrigan. Steve was the Director of Assessment and Research, I believe was his official title, but, or Research, Director of Research and Evaluation in District 214, and has done a significant amount of consulting. He is extremely respected and highly regarded in the area. And as you can see from his credentials that are included in your packet, is very, very accomplished professionally and has done this type of work for an extended period of time, you know, decades, in various capacities. So it was our belief that it was appropriate to utilize his services for this portion of the work. And we would, if approved, want to begin this immediately and get this information and get it in the hands of the other people that will all begin working together as soon as possible.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract with Dr. Steve Corrigan in an amount not to exceed $5,000 to conduct an all-day kindergarten feasibility study.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Margaret, seconded by John. Any discussion? Go ahead, Margaret.
I have, and this feasibility study, I think it's incredibly important. And it, we've talked a lot about this, and this may be, so what, concerning for the district on the consulting pieces that we put together. But if we go back and we start looking at Phase 1, we had a lot of ideas from the community. We also got a lot of pushback. The people said, so what is this going to look like? What does this mean? How will this work? And that's what this Phase 2, this consulting piece, is really trying to get us to. How will this work? And then we'll come back to the community and say, okay, these were your ideas. Here's our meat around this. Is this something you still want to do? This is really important for this feasibility study. Because many people in the kindergarten, in the kindergarten, who talked about all-day kindergarten, thought this was a great idea. I also heard many people say, we value extremely our neighborhood schools. I also heard many people say that, you know, we have, we have certain areas in our community already which help support and supplement a longer kindergarten program. Okay, let's put all of those pieces together. This is what I believe this feasibility study does. It says, it goes out and it says, what do we have? What would it cost to do something like this? Is this even implementable? And if so, how, what would it look like? And putting together different proposals. So I just think this is an incredibly important part to have this information before we move forward to make any type of additional decisions. The one piece, and I read the proposal, I believe Dr. Corrigan has tremendous credentials and has proven his expertise in research. I would like to say, I would want to make sure that what's added to this proposal is that there is some work that's done that goes out and assesses what's already available in our community. So he adds that piece to see what's available, how has that met our current need, what are some of the pieces that have not been met as of yet? So that's the one piece I would ask, that would be specifically added to the proposal, his work.
Yeah, that's...
Do you mean programs outside the district?
Yes, I mean, so, yes, not necessarily. I know we're going to look at facilities. But I'm talking about programs that are in existence already in our community. Let's take a look at what those are, understand what their value are, value is, understand what might still be missing, and factor that into our equation.
That's something that we can easily talk with him about. That's not an issue.
So all-day kindergarten was, you know, well-talked about in Focus 205. So I agree, we need to study it. I just wanted to add a question for him to look at. As he looks at districts, if, could you find districts that are similar to ours that decided not to implement all-day kindergarten, and why? If there are any?
Yes, we can, we can take a look at, the idea was to study the top-performing unit districts, and that was part of the proposal, for the ones that still don't have it or have chosen not to, or have chosen to go away with it, which I think what we'll find, to be honest with you, is that they pretty much all have it. But if, if some of them do not, we can, we can look into the rationale for why they provide the programming that they currently do and what went into their decisions.
You know, you might look at this and say, oh, another consultant, you know, and this one is a, you know, it's a $5,000 contract. Why are you adding this on? Well, I thought about that. And for me, I think this is going to be one of the largest transformations in Elmhurst education in a long time. Just from a logistical standpoint, going from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten is a doubling, doubling of the facilities, it's doubling of the staff, doubling of the time. And that's just on the school side of it. Let's talk about what it's going to be like for the community when our kindergarteners are going to school all day. And so it's a big change. And for us to take a little bit of extra effort, ask a few more questions, and I love that these questions are coming from the board, that widens that scope. I think that's great. I think it's a very responsible thing to do. So I'm glad we're adding this piece into the... And I think there are a lot of people out there with a lot of different opinions, and I think this is going to bring it out. And I think this is another case of finding out what this community wants to do. So, it's my view.
And I agree with everything that's talked about. I actually am going to vote no, and I want you to know why. It's the timing, is my concern. I believe that we need a lot of additional information. But based on our current culture of neighborhood schools and our current state of our facilities and funding, and our current class size, and the impact that we've been hearing about consistently over the last several years and more loudly this past year. And so all-day kindergarten would actually require probably two additional classrooms per building with no or limited building space. So I think that for all-day kindergarten, I like what we're doing, what we just approved, which was more consulting and communication to get out to the community and a wider net of the community, so that we can build and understand the impact or the linkage of updating all of our facilities that's going to be required for all-day kindergarten. Or the trade-offs that the community's going to have to decide. If they don't upgrade all the buildings to handle all-day kindergarten, what are we going to do to neighborhood schools? Or how are we going to do that for kindergarten and then move the students into their neighborhood schools? So it's just the timing of my no at this point. I think that we would, we could get additional information with the communications consultant that we just approved, and get a little bit more information on what can we do with all of our buildings being updated to handle this want? And I'd like to know, from a wider net of the community, do they support? What would really be required to do this all-day kindergarten? So I think I kind of hit all of my pieces here, so that you understand it's the timing and the need to link updating all of our facilities with the want for all-day kindergarten.
I agree with all of that. I understand where you're coming from. I'll add one more thought is, the all-day kindergarten, I look at it as a cornerstone of the start of what would happen to all of our buildings. So all-day kindergarten, we'll get a little more information on that. And that will give us more information on the 14 buildings we have. So it's kind of the start of a longer process. But go ahead, yeah.
I just want to be sure I am completely clear. This feasibility study is just that. It says, it may be feasible, it might not be feasible. So we are not making any determination that we are going down this path. We're just trying to put some more... We're just trying to put some more, some more structure around if we did go down this path, what it might look like, and what it costs. Am I missing something in what this proposal is attempting to do?
Well, there's various aspects of what would need to be involved. First of all, verifying that the community actually does want to go in this direction. And if we find out that's not the case, and that certainly, that's, that's, you know, one, that's, that's like, then we go somewhere else, there's a flow chart or whatever. But the, the other aspects of how we would, how students, whether or not there would be a tuition component, you know, what the facility's implications would be in terms of how we would accommodate the additional space, and all of those kinds of things are the types of things that I think we need to know what the community is willing to support. Because when it ultimately comes to a facilities question, if the community isn't going to support it, we don't, we don't want to put something in front of them that they're not going to be comfortable with. So I think what it will do is be the impetus to drive some of the future planning and decision-making. It's, the results of the study are the results of the study. That's not mean that when the report is given to the board, that, that the board is going to be expected to make some type of specific decision at that time, but then it will be part of the continuing conversation about shaping the plan and the community input and the ultimate way we move forward. So I think my answer reinforced what you believed was the point of this in the first place, I hope.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
No.
Mrs. Eppner?
Yes. It's four ayes, one nay, two absents, and that motion carries. We have action on closed session item. Approval of settlement agreement with Elmhurst Teachers Council.
I move that the Board of Education approve the settlement agreement with the Elmhurst Teachers Council as presented.
I second that. Moved by John, seconded by Karen. Jim, do you want to give a quick update?
Maybe, maybe he does, maybe he doesn't. This settlement agreement is in response to concerns, agreements filed by an individual teacher, and also a demand to bargain filed against the district in regards to the implementation of the Middle School Task Force recommendation and approval of that recommendation. As we worked through some of the issues, according to legal counsel as well as the contract, a grievance was filed, which is allowable under the contract, but it was not filed appropriately, as nothing had actually taken place, and a grievance is in response to a violation of a contract. And so the, the district administration, we met with the union leadership, we talked about the concerns and the issues, and so we also notified the union that we would be moving forward with the implementation recommended by the Middle School Task Force, because that is what that task force was tasked to do within the contract. And if they felt that there was a concern over us moving forward with that, because the contract did not specifically speak to the implementation of the program, they are allowed then, under collective bargaining rules, to file what is called a demand to bargain. And so they laid a demand to bargain on the district to discuss these issues and see if there was a resolution that could be amicably worked out. So as a result of that, we had a leadership change within the ETC. President changed, leadership cabinet positions changed for the union. And so we took it upon ourselves to meet with the leadership and have a conversation regarding the concerns that had been expressed by some of the ETC members regarding the implementation plan for the Middle School Task Force recommendation. In addition to that, once we had a meeting, it was determined that there were some strong feelings that a memorandum of agreement to make the recommendations from the task force become a part of implementation, there was a strong belief that that was necessary. It was not our opinion that that was necessary, but in order to try and foster some, some trust and goodwill with the union leadership, we were assured that it was the feeling of the new leadership that this particular issue should go to the union for approval, and that it was their responsibility to ensure that the memorandum of agreement would actually be passed. Unfortunately, that did not come to fruition, but prior to us acquiescing to their request to go to a memorandum of agreement, we had already worked out all of the issues and questions, and those responses were contained in the memorandum of agreement. So when that memorandum was not ratified, we had also made it very clear at the outset that we would be moving forward with the implementation plan, as we had already moved down the pathway of hiring additional staff, working through scheduling within the buildings. And so the union came back to us then with the demand to bargain, and we resolved all of the issues surrounding the concerns that were had in good faith with the ETC leadership. And we were able, with the help of a federal mediator, to actually come to resolution, and that is the settlement agreement that is before you today. And it amicably addresses the concerns that were expressed. It also contains provisional language that indicates there is no admission of contract violation, but we have come to an agreement with the ETC to allow us to move forward with a common goal and a common direction, and I'll say, try to reduce or eliminate some of the ill will that was being felt at the time that the grievance was initially filed. So you have before you a settlement agreement that has been recognized by our legal counsel as well as the federal mediator and the ETC leadership, and their local representation from Local 571, that this will put to rest any further questions regarding the issue.
Go ahead.
Can I basically summarize it as, the teachers have approved the middle school scheduling and the changes to the middle school and all that sort of stuff, and everything is, you know, good? Is that what we're summarizing?
Yes.
Discussion?
Did John actually make the motion?
Oh, did you make the motion?
I heard you.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we did. Okay. Don't confuse me. Okay. All right. Go ahead with the roll call. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eppner?
Yes. It's five ayes, no nays, two absents, that motion passes. Superintendent Communication?
Just one. Just my last chance to remind everybody that Monday evening at 7:00, you've heard a lot of references to the rigor and relevance framework, and Dr. Daggett tonight, he will be in Elmhurst, and he will be at York High School in the Commons, and he will do a community presentation from 7 till 8:30. We are certainly hoping for a good turnout. And again, that's Monday, the 14th, 7:00 PM, York Commons.
I have one item, are there others? No, okay. So Karen and Ellen Walsh and I have worked on a board annual calendar, and it's a tool for us to use to anticipate discussion items that are upcoming in our board meetings, or planning, you know, when you're planning vacations, or, you know, different, when we have our jobs and our lives. So we can anticipate some of these discussions, and hopefully give feedback if you think you're going to miss a meeting. You know, we can give feedback earlier to superintendent, and just kind of be better planners of what's coming ahead. Now, I would like to ask for any feedback or updates, comments, additions. This is a work in progress, it's a draft, and we can, you know, it'll just be a tool for, you know, updates at any time. John?
I just want to say thanks for putting this together. You guys did a great job, and it really is something. Where will this reside, where folks can find it? I know, we've got a large website, it's very complex. I guess it'd be in Board Calendar, right? Or in that general neighborhood?
Yeah, right now, I don't think, it's not public right now. I wanted to get any feedback, and then we can make it public, post it publicly, and under Board Member Documents, if there's a public content for that.
Yeah, you know, maybe, you know, we do have Board Calendar there. Maybe there can be a link, and I don't want to get in the weeds here, but, you know, make it real easy for people to see things coming up, they can see what it is we're going to do in the near future. So it's a really good tool. If I could just, while I got the microphone open here, just say, on the last item that we voted on, the settlement of the grievance, that had the agreement in the confidential because we hadn't approved it. Now that we've approved it, we can move it to the public, so people can see what it is that we approved to resolve the matter.
Yes.
Okay.
It's fine.
All right.
I guess.
No, Ellen will move it.
Yeah. Ellen will move it above the line. So that people can go back and see, and they can see what we approved, so.
So any comments or feedback, let me know in the next couple of days, and then we'll let the board know where it resides and have it in public content. Thanks. Upcoming meetings. August 22nd, Board of Education meeting, and September 12th, Board of Education meeting. We're at the end of the agenda, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.